All councillors, please stand. Welcome councillors, members of the executive assembly and the public joining us for the airway stream. Swan Hill City Council acknowledges the custodians, traditional custodians of the land on which we may pay due respects to their elders in past and prison. Councillor King, pray it bless you.
It besets your lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the Royal City of Swanhill.
Thank you, Councillor King. Please. See if we have any apologies.
All councillors are present, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Directors and officers present, please.
Unfortunately, Director Green is unavailable today, but all other directors present.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes, I'll have a move please of the minutes of the meeting itself. Scheduled meeting of council power on the 21st of May, 2021, the unscheduled meeting of council power on the 1st of June, 2021, and the unscheduled meeting of council power upon the paper due 2022. Move councillor, please. Second councillor Jeffrey Oliver, ask unanimously, disposes of conflict of interest. I have a conflict of interest with ITP 21.45, in the grounds of Swan Hill, fifth, council is on the board of that. Any further disclosures?
Just wanted to point out with that, after discussions with the CEO, that I don't have a conflict of interest in that matter. I'm a member of Swan Hill through amendment of the levy, but I'm a board member appointed by council, so therefore I do not have a conflict of interest. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for clarifying that, councillor King. I feel there's a conflict of interest. Joint letters of reading petition, so we have any, Mr CEO?
No, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. As we are under current rules, no, there was, there was no public question?
One by email, Mr Mayor.
Was it? Oh, thank you. We do have a joint letter or a letter?
No, public question, question for the public.
Public question time.
So suspense.
Yep. No suspension, was Mr Mayor, councillor secretary, by councillor Jeffrey, wiser fiver. Yes, I've asked unanimously this question. The question is from Mr William Gordon Leskey. The question is, why has Swan Hill City Centre Council chose the Pioneer Settlement grounds to locate the Outplace building when there are several other alternative locations? This will destroy Swan Hill's main attraction.
Mr Mayor, I think Mr Gordon Leskey forward his question. Excuse me. Following the 2017 feasibility assessment, which was called the Murray River Interpretive Centre feasibility assessment, and that is available on council's website, a series of sites along the river and in Swan Hill township were investigated for the suitability to host a new development, which may become a new art gallery, an Aboriginal cultural experience space, or visitor service centre. Council resolved in December 2018 to proceed with the development of the Outplace project to the north of the Gem in the Pioneer Settlement, as the feasibility assessment indicated that this site offered the optimal level of economic, social and financial benefit, and the only site that provided a good entry to the settlement. Further investigation was carried out in 2019 on a second site option for the Outplace project outside the Pioneer Settlement where the Spoon's Restaurant is currently situated. After consultation and communications process that took into account the views of the community and the experts in tourism and arts fields, council made the decision at the July 20 special council meeting to proceed with the Pioneer Settlement site, as it is the best location to achieve the aims, the entire aims of the project. That was the only question from the public, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. See, open forum, we're not having tonight, because we're not open to the public. Actually, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Please, second councillor Benham, wiser fiver, carried. Section B before us, might be 21.3, aerodrome curfew and use fees and charges. Mr Carter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report seeks council's approval to go for public consultation on the recommendation to introduce fees and charges and a night time curfew over the Swan Hill and Rotherham aerodrome. The report was a follow up from discussions with council over the past four, five months, and notice on motion in March. We had had engagement with the current aerodrome places and some members of the Swan Hill, same Swan Hill Serenity Action Group. So the feedback that we've received is incorporated in this report, and most notably, the changes based on that feedback are to increase the fees for touch and goes from $10 to $15, and to reduce the parking fees over 24 hours from $10 to $5, and a slight reduction in the annual lending fees for tenants of the aerodromes. So what we're seeking from council today is to release this report for public comment. We are proposing that it will be released for 28 days, in line with the budgets, the road management plan and all other documents that council releases for mandatory consultation. And it is worth noting that this report does not have a mandated time for consultation. We just find that it's good practice to give people the same amount of time as for the other statutory requirements.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor Jeffery?
Question. Just to let the centre accept the recommendation for, however, the six hour, it's not, that's Swan Hill standard time, not daylight savings. In the report, it's got reference to daylight savings.
Yeah, this, this makes it easier, because otherwise with daylight savings, with people coming from other states, it can get very confusing. This is very standard. Whatever the time here is, it's 11pm, he ends 6am.
Okay, thank you.
First question, yes, councillor King.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We talked about in our report that there's 14 lease holders at Swanhill Aerodrome. How many leases are there, what?
We did have one, but it appears that he's not going to renew his lease.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. Yes, mayor.
I've just got a question, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to ask, does this process that we're following through what we've got within this brief meet the requirements of the new consultation requirements?
That will meet the requirements, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Yes, councillor, please.
And Mr Carter, just in relation to this curfew that's being proposed, how does it, you've got in the report, it's a prohibition for touch and go, it was, yeah, prohibition for touch and go, inserted on page one, will not affect local airport users. How can that be, if you've got a curfew in place that doesn't say that? Why doesn't it affect them?
That's a good question. So it's touch and go, so you have to do both movements at once, so if you're landing, that's a different, so there's no curfew on landing.
Just a follow up question, Mr Carter, then, what's stopping these cruise crews from landing, waiting a minute, and taking off?
They will be subjected to a landing fee. In all honesty, this is a curfew that has a real reason for the touch and goes, you would not pay touch and go fees ten times a night, that's probably quite excessive. So it is to discourage touch and go operations. It certainly is not applicable to emergency services or to anyone who has lease.
And that's how I understand it, someone returning home late, you know, from another place, it doesn't restrict that arrival at that time, is that correct?
Yes, it does not restrict.
So it doesn't, no, yes. Can you explain for us, touch and goes, is that a circuit, a circle around the airport, or is it?
Not necessarily. So touch and go is just the landing and taking off immediately, so there's no parking, no real landing. Whereas a circuit can go around in circuits without approaching for landing. So the two can be different or the same.
So does that mean that if, if a plane came from, let's say, Wurjira, and came and did 10 circuits of our airport, there would be no charge and let without stopping?
So as we've discussed previously, council does not control the airspace above the airfield. So we have control over the ground, we do not have a control over the air. So we are putting a curfew and discouraging flight schools, however, we are not the ones that can enforce that curfew.
Yeah.
Yes, councillor King.
Are you aware that there are other airports that do ban visiting circuit train to their airport? Do you have a comprehensive ban on visiting circuit train?
You probably can, however, our deed says non discriminatory, and that would be a discrimination, so we thought little advice to see how we can go about imposing curfews that are fair and in accordance to the deeds that we have with the Commonwealth. So discrimination is certainly one of the areas in the deed that we cannot breach.
However, are you aware that Ballarat and Bowland Heads and others who do have a comprehensive ban on visiting circuit train?
Yeah, true, Mr Mayor. There are a lot of different deeds for the different aerodromes, so our deed is very clear on non discrimination. So it says non discriminatory access to the aerodrome, others might not have that. So it depends on what their deed says to what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. Now, it's a different story where the Commonwealth will prosecute us, but breaching a deed nominally that we're breaching a deed is probably not an area that council was going to.
Yes, councillor King.
Yes, Mr Carter, where did you come up with the figures for the touch and go of $15? Where did you get that?
So, true, Mr Mayor, the touch and go for $15, that was the suggestion from talking with the leaseholders at the aerodrome. We were suggesting $10, but again, to discourage touch and goes, the more we charge, the less likely for operators to come and use our aerodromes for touch and goes. So it was a suggestion that to get better outcomes and to discourage the visiting aircrafts. $15 touch and go would be quite a significant fee for a flight school, and that offsets with the parking around the aerodrome to allow for business and other visitors.
Yes, councillor, please.
Just a follow up question, Mr Carter, if council was able to set up a community consultation then, is nothing saying that the dollars couldn't be increased or whatever?
Absolutely not. It will bring whatever the community brings back, just like you'll see in the next report with the road management plan, and will present it for council's consideration. Just a reminder that we did look at the fees at others surrounding aerodromes.
Yes, councillor King.
Are you aware that Simon Clevers in the media, in the ABC, did say that when Swan Hill started a flight training school, the noise issues would be alleviated in Wurjira? Were you aware of that report? Just some time ago, beyond a year ago?
Yeah, I don't think that's quite relevant to this report, because we are not proposing anything related to a flight school. We're actually actively discouraging flight school operators apart from the flight school that we actually have, as well as tenants at the aerodrome.
However, it's, it's true that visiting flight circuit train can cause a noise issue, and could be used potentially by flight training schools in other places to alleviate their noise worries.
Of course, any public aerodrome is to be used by any aircraft for purposes that they're registered to use it for.
But not between 11pm and 6am?
No.
Your recommendations are?
That's right. Another question. Could a flight training school take a lease at the airport and train students not from our region and pay the annual $350 fee for circuit train within the curfew?
I can only answer this in one way, councillor, it is if there is a proposal of a flight school establishing in the aerodrome, we will be bringing it to council, and it depends on the council's decision whether they can or cannot take the lease at the aerodrome. Our hangers are for smaller operators. What you're suggesting is quite a significant operation, and none of the officers had the delegation to make the decision like that.
What is, what is the trigger for, for the amount or for the community to know? Is it about the numbers of pilots trained or?
It really will be the investment that's required, that will change significantly the operation of the aerodrome. Plus, we know that this is a very sensitive area of interest within the community, and it's certainly not something that any officer, whether it's me or anyone else, will take upon themselves to approve without coming and having an endorsement by the council.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? If there's not, we'll ask for a move, please. Move, just councillor King.
I'll move the, move a motion as per the recommendation.
Do I have a second, Mr Secretary of Councillor?
I'd like to suggest an amendment, please. That the period of consultation is for two months, in line with our community engagement policy.
Do I have a second for that?
No, as you said, the question, Mr Mayor, your community engagement policy doesn't stipulate two months, does it, Mr Senator?
I haven't read it in the last few days, I'm sorry, Mr Senator.
Can I confer? The community engagement policy states that we should involve the community at the planning stage of when there's a significant policy change or something that will impact on their lives. At this stage, I feel that we have involved airport users and one member.
Well, you get, all marching, there's a community consultation policy, say two months.
I agree with councillor McKay's interpretation, there's no time limit, it does suggest that we need, so anything I do is affected by a decision in council, which was the office's objection in the early days' time.
So do we have a second for that amendment? We don't have a second, but in the glasses? Councillor King, your special motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank council officers for their work and investigations into the options following the notice of motion in March, and work that was done prior to that when this issue has come to the table in the last, in the last 12 months with various charges and whatnot. I believe the proposed change has been arrived at in consultation with aerodrome users and researching into other airports. A combination of the casual users' charges and the prohibition will go a long way towards alleviating visiting flight training schools both during the day and at night, and I note that it's prohibited between the hours of 11pm and 6am local time. Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. The proposal does not restrict normal aircraft operations, which have run around for well over 50 years, at the, at the Swan Hill Aerodrome. If a flight training school was set up in Swan Hill, as Mr Pope Carter has said, we would then have the opportunity as council to impose other charges and conditions during the lease negotiation process. So I believe that that is adequate coverage for council and for the community in terms of any risk associated with a commercial flight training school setting up at the Swan Hill Aerodrome. And I believe it's appropriate that, that this now goes out for community comment, for public comment, to come back to council in the future, once we've received the comments from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor there.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, let's remember that this recommendation, this motion is to release this for public comment that the use of fees and charges and under the community engagement policy. Everything that goes out thus far, again, the community engagement policy doesn't include a time, but the mandate of time we use is 28 days, which has been sufficient. but the mandate of time we use is twenty eight days, which has been sufficient to this point. Community members that have a vested interest in issues will certainly, uh, do their research and submit their feedback probably within the first ten days. It may take, some will take longer to digest than others. But I think twenty eight days in the, in terms of practicality and making practical changes on the ground, I think delaying process and policy implementation would be against, uh, against making positive changes for our community. So, um, I'm happy for it to go out to public comment. Um, I'm happy that the process has been followed to this point with the major stakeholders within the aerodromes. Let's remember that there's two of them. And, uh, it'll be interesting to see what the feedback is when it comes back. Thank you.
Any further speakers for the motion? Are you against the motion? I'll speak for the motion, to me. Yeah, look, um, as the two councillors said, this is going out for community consultation. All the councillors who are on this table, I know I have, and I'm sure the others have received emails already in relation to this item. The, um, people that are aware this item is on the agenda today, they will know if they receive a, um, public comment. So I don't believe it needs to be longer than twenty eight days. It's been on the table for a long time now. They want action. They don't want it to be extended out and not, as councillor Lewis said, not have a decision made for another two months. So the sooner we get that feedback back, I think the better. And this is all coming about from the flight training school that was, um, here earlier for want of a better terminology. Um, what was there is, um, we've had complaints about noise the aerodrome since that time. If you look in the report, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, one complaint. Two thousand nineteen, none. Two thousand twenty went to eight, two thousand twenty went to penta. So we had eighteen complaints of noise. So it's just about in relation to the flight training school. That's what I believe in the question asked, Mr. MacGover, if you're willing, fifteen dollars for touch and goes. If that's going to stop the flight, the, um, flight training schools from going here, I think we should look at maybe increasing that price a lot. Um, we can only control what happens on the ground, we can't control what happens in the air. So let's hit him with the pot as much as we can whilst it's on the ground. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor McFerrin, uh, you have a speaker for the motion. Are you against the motion?
Um, thank you, Mayor Moore. Um, I'm also appreciative of fellow councillors bringing these, uh, issues to the council and to the public. It's a, a great move forward. Um, only suggesting that I think it is a very complex policy area. And indeed, that for community to digest such complex policy takes a little bit longer. I'm concerned that our residents are thoroughly informed and thoroughly able to participate. People have demands on their lives, they're not always able to digest this information. In fact, I would challenge that this report is comprehensive. There are other avenues to exercise control over airport noise, including changing the E R S A and fly neighborly agreements. Um, these are utilized by airports in other places because indeed, uh, flight training noise has impacted on other towns. So this is not a phenomenon, um, just experienced by, uh, potentially by our region. And unfortunately, it is incumbent on the councillors to be able to look into the future and potential impacts into the future. Because it's often, if you've got loose policy arrangements, things can creep up. We're at a stage where our town is very attractive for people to come and live in. We are all, every councillor here, I believe, is in the business of making Swan Hill municipality one of the best places to live, one of the best places to bring our children, uh, one of the best places to visit. And I would, uh, like our community, who I believe were very concerned about the impact of flight training noise, to have a full say and inform our council about what they want for the next twenty years in our region. Um, I believe that our residents, who are here now, are our best investors, every single one of them. And, uh, we need to be, have our minds on their investment in their homes and potential and future, uh, amenity and wellbeing their way of life. This is a country way of life, we have, there are a lot of things we don't have here. We're far from the big hospitals, we're far from, uh, the bright lights of the city. But what we do have is our natural environment, um, unique and subtle as it is. And what we do here have is our, um, the lifestyle of a, a rural town that avails. Some people will say, well, if you live near an airport, you expect airport noise. There is not a single person who has ever expected they could potentially have three hundred, um, pilots training at this airport. This was not, never on anyone's agenda and it did, but can't get onto their agenda. Um, so the community has, has certainly spoken to us about that and it's now part. So it's why I suggested the two month period, purely so that our community has time to engage about it. Thank you, I'm disappointed that we don't get more time.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers against the motion? Does the speaker rule the motion? Councillor King, do you wish to close?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, just very briefly, uh, I think a lot's already been said. Um, I believe that the report, the recommendations of the report, uh, and going out for public comment, um, at this point in time is definitely a step in the right direction on this, um, emotive issue. Um, I think the important thing to note here as well is that this stuff, this isn't the, the be all and end all document. This isn't the be all and end all recommendation. Um, and the door is well and truly open in the future, um, if we get more complaints than, say, eighteen per year, um, to impose further conditions, um, at, at the, at the aerodrome. But I believe this is a step in the right direction and it's a good time to send out public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. There's no further debate, we'll go to the vote, all those are titled. This, vote's carried. Motion's carried. I'll put B twenty one point four for asset management, road management plan and asset plan. Mr. MacGover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report seeks council's endorsement of the draft, um, road management plan. As you may remember, the road management plan came, um, to council in, uh, April and council, um, approved it to go out for community consultation. That, um, period started from technically the twentieth of April, but, um, the twenty third of April is when it was advertised in media and concluded on the twenty fourth of May. We've received seventeen submissions, um, most, um, the details are within the report. Not all the submissions related to, to the road management plan, they actually related more to how people utilize specific roads and suggestions for either maintenance or capital works. Um, the suggestions that were related to the road management plan itself have been incorporated in the road management plan, um, as presented to you today. And, um, each submitted has either received a response, um, around their submission or is awaiting the endorsement of the plan to receive, um, a response to their submission.
Questions, councillors?
I've just got a comment on two oh eight five seven five from Jane, I saw her. Um, but certainly their engineering are lucky because we have sign pollution, those drivers do not pay attention to significant toxic compounds. I just wondered if the engineering department is aware that there has been several very serious accidents out there. One in particular is where a young woman was actually killed, um, when she ran into a truck and a van. Um, and I had a bit of difficulty with the sign pollution issue. So I've sort of been at there all the time and there's very few signs that say that, like, um, so how did they come up with that reasoning?
So, um, I'll try to answer this as best as I can with, um, the amount of signs. We actually run through, um, a program and it's big roads gives us a good indication of all acceptable terms of signage. Advisory signs are the ones that are the least, um, recommended, um, from big roads because again, they're advising people of hazards that they should be aware of. We had very similar requests for, uh, more signs for kangaroos of, for bus routes, school bus routes or school bus stops. And they are all across our municipality. It's, um, we know that we're just requesting more signs even on the, the Manavali Highway for kangaroos. Um, Vicar said that there's enough signage and there's enough knowledge and you can see kangaroos being killed every single day. So clearly not everyone is aware of the kangaroos. But it does create, um, an attitude of, yeah, another sign and not, um, drivers not paying attention to the mandated signs. So that's what, um, a sign pollution is referred to.
Any further questions, councillors? Yes, councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just a question on, uh, again, related to a couple of the submissions and the, and the responses. Um, where, where people have asked about, um, roads and upgrades of roads and, and whatnot. And the response has been that, you know, it's in our capital works program or, you know, this will be done, um, as money becomes available. To what level do we have roads designed, ready to go? So that if, um, or when money becomes available, um, we've actually got designs for roads sitting on the, on the shelf, so to speak, um, ready to be implemented. It's just a bit rough. Like, how many kilometers of road would we have pre-designed, ready to, ready to go?
So instead of, um, kilometers of road, if you're looking at what we do as a capital works program every year, we have next year and part of the year ahead of it, ready to go. So because again, in terms of kilometers, it depends on the treatment, you can have a different answer. Um, and the road management plan only sets up the rules. It really tells us how we're going to maintain and operate roads in a certain classification and how quickly I'm going to respond to items. It does not deal with an item or defect on a specific road at a specific point in time.
Any further questions, councillors? If I'm not wrong, please. This councillor.
Uh, I'll leave that to the reception.
You have a second, councillor McPhee? You speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Really quickly, uh, this is a very, very, very extensive, uh, road management plan, um, that has received a lot of submissions that have all been taken into consideration. I thank the officers for all the work on this, which is a, um, a huge job. I mean, in the old days, council's job was roads rate rubbish. So this is one of those plans that's probably highest on the priority list as far as the old, old way of thinking goes. But, um, I'm glad that we got as many submissions and that we are engaged with the community. So I'm, I'm really happy that we did get those submissions in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, look, I'd like to thank the submitters in relation to this, anyone who takes an effort to read the council reports and has made submissions as well, see, because we represent the community and we expect the community to have input as well. Um, albeit some of those were allowed through the plan. I'm pleased to see, as a result of this being adopted as it is, I will get an answer to the initial submission and explain where that, what the situation is in a concern of a particular road. So I'd like to thank the officers for that. I think we do get back to every submitter in every report when we do create public comment. Um, and it's also pleasing, like, roads aren't a big issue in Swan Hill. We have, I think, now, I think it's about four thousand kilometers of road all up. Um, and this actually stipulates a lot, people taking care of, looking at it. A lot of the times we get a lot of abuse about our roads, they're not actually our roads, they're big road roads. These relate to our roads. And, um, the community got to be aware of that. And sometimes, although they're difficult to document to read, there's a list here of, uh, public roads. And you look at it and you see what are our roads and what are big road roads. We do the best we can. Every year the budget has to be pressed in relation to the amount of money we spend on roads and the time that extra funding coming through, um, the federal government in relation to road funding, which is great. And it's all spent on the roads because it is vital to our municipality and all the farmers and our tourists who travel through us. I think much of that come back as well as our local residents. So can you maybe, um, start putting this together? Thank you. Councillor McPhee, any further speakers for the motion?
I just wanted to, um, agree with councillor McPhee, with the amount of work that's gone into it. It's a very comprehensive report, but I also think it's really pleasing. It's also said that we've had a lot of replies, the council doesn't have. So it's a good sign.
Councillor.
Um, in agreement, I think it's really, um, great to see that some of the roads that were, um, but not classified in the maintained section are now being lifted up. That's really important to the communities around there, that they're on a certain rotation of maintenance that's acknowledged. Although they were maintained before, but now they're improved in their classification. Um, in regard to the consultation process, it is really encouraging, we had so many, uh, submissions. Roads are extremely important, it's something people encounter every day. Uh, just a word in regard to the consultation, we can tweak it a little bit and have worked with the consultation period not in selling time. It's very difficult for a rural dryland, which makes up the most uses of those roads in the outlying area, in a larger proportion of the municipality. That's just something that we can improve and make things a little bit difficult. Um, but overall, it's a good, uh, very good document. And also, um, important for us as councillors to be making community aware that it's them putting their feedback back in and letting us know when roads need maintenance. That is an important part of the plan. Not to feel bad about that, that's what we need. We need the community to let us know when there are defects. Thank you.
Any further speakers for the motion? This motion. Look, councillor, do you like to close?
Good night, Eric, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, and, uh, can vote in all those titles, motion? Asking, as it is. Now, this item is item B twenty one four five, that's one of the, and the market plan and budget, uh, twenty two months. So do you need to, uh, speak or?
Certainly, my honour.
The government rules the deputy mayor.
True, it takes a.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, because it's here. I'm closing the door, okay. Report B twenty one point four five, Mr. McPhee.
Uh, thank you, Madam Deputy Chair. Um, I'm presenting this report in the absence of, uh, Director Green, who was here today. Uh, so each year we require Swan Hill Inc. to prepare a draft budget and marketing plan and present that to council for approval. Uh, Swan Hill Inc. have done that and, uh, is attached to the report for council's consideration. And I'm assuming, uh, I'll take that all councillors have read and digested both the budget and the marketing plan. By way of summary, the, uh, annual budget for Swan Hill Inc. is in the order of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That total expenses of six hundred and fifty two thousand, three hundred and twenty seven dollars. Um, it's effectively a balanced budget. They're showing a proposed net service of five hundred and forty three dollars with, uh, with such a substantial amount of expenditure. That's effectively a balanced budget. Uh, there is a considerable, uh, contribution towards additional marketing in this year's budget. And that's really, what I'm about to report, I was really worried about by an underspend last year caused by COVID issue related issues. So Swan Hill Inc. have a budget proposing to put an additional one hundred thousand dollars into marketing of the region. Uh, also twenty thousand dollars put aside for opportunistic promotional opportunities. So as, as options come up, uh, they have twenty thousand dollars, which to be a bit flexible. Uh, an additional contribution to the traders committee of ten thousand dollars, uh, and a repayment to the Swan Hill City Council of a loan that's been in place for a, a number of years, basically a float to, uh, Swan Hill Inc. of fifty thousand dollars. So that squares that away and repays that long term, long term, um, float that council has provided them. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm recommending that council approve the Swan Hill Inc. annual marketing plan and the budget, twenty one thirty two.
Thank you, Mr. McPhee. Questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee.
Yeah, Mr. Seale, uh, tune, um, page one ninety six of the agenda or page sixteen of the marketing plan. The ten thousand dollars promotion to Swan Hill Tennis Championship.
Yes.
We, um, had put forty thousand dollars into that initially with the proviso that that money was going to be spent on advertising. Can't stand the country, that's going to be spent on advertising?
Uh, I'm aware that this amount is in their budget, uh, which is in addition to the monies that Swan Hill City Council are proposing to provide to the victorious, I think it's called Victorian Seniors Tennis, um, event. Only to the extent that Swan Hill Inc. can demand that of the promoters. To answer your question.
Any other questions, councillors? I have a couple, if that's okay. Uh, and you may or may not be able to answer these, Mr. McPhee, but.
Deputy Chair, do have Cara Brown in the room as well.
Terrific.
Running on the bench for assistance in this detail.
Just a couple of clarifications. On page one ninety five of the annual budget, the official visitor guide is a standard income, an income of fifty thousand dollars. Is the ad space sold to generate an income from the visitor guide? How is that? How's that generate an income? Uh, that's a good question.
Yeah, pretty sure it is. It is?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple more questions on page one ninety six. Under targeted mainstream campaign, the expense of a hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. When you say a targeted mainstream campaign, are we talking about traditional media being?
mainstream campaign, are we talking about traditional media being radio TV? And photography of $8,000, is that an annual budget or it seems cheap? Do we up, upgrade our...
We do.
We do? Every year?
Yeah. We have various photo shoots or video shoots.
And $8,000 isn't up?
Yeah.
Okay. True. Any other questions, councillors? Can I have a move? Councilor Young?
Yeah, I would.
As per the recommendation. Secondly, Councilman McPhee. Councilor Young, would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, yes, I would. Um, I'd just like to say that Swan Hill Incorporated is a very, very good part of our, um, engaging to this wonderful community, business community and general community as well. Um, I'd like to congratulate them on the work within their um project here and their plan and just so keep up the good work. Well, basically.
Councilman McPhee, could I speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, I agree, Swan Hill is a very important arm of council, it's not actually an arm of council, it's funded by council, but it's actually funded by a special rate from the traders. So it's not actually coming out of every road partner's money. The only question I raised was about that $10,000. The um seniors general has asked for $40,000 donation from council. I believe with Swan Hill putting in that $10,000 as well, that in a roundabout way comes from Swan Hill Council because we fund Swan Hill through the levy that's um the tax, the tax levy that comes out. Um, I have concerns about that, that we're giving them now $50,000 instead of the $40. But other than that, I mean, Swan Hill Inc. got to be congratulated for what they do for the region. They certainly have marketed the region well over the many years they've done it and I'm certain that they ensure they will continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McPhee. Any other speakers for the motion? Councilor King.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to add to, uh, the Councilor Young and me, both said, um, it's important to note that every business who does contribute to the special rate, uh, which funds Swan Hill Inc., has the opportunity to influence how those funds are spent by participation in various forums, meetings, subcommittees and also at board level, uh, because every member can nominate for a board position when they become available. Um, and the question remains, without Swan Hill Inc., who would actually market the Swan Hill region? So they do an exceptional job. Uh, I believe the, the region gets exceptional value for money out of the special rate. Uh, commend them on their preparing a very difficult budget, uh, given the underspend last year due to um COVID influences, but also opportunities that have come up as a result of that. So, um, yeah, commend this to the, to a favorable vote.
Thank you, Councilor King. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? And we'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Direct advice, because you fit the mayor, please. Oh, sorry.
Next item on the agenda, I'd have B21.46, mobile food trading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As per the previous report and, and following this, uh, because of the absence of Director Green, I'll present this on the table. Uh, I already acknowledge that we have Kelsey Curry in the, in the chamber to assist if there's any detailed questions about the history of this. Uh, this report proposes a draft mobile food trading code of practice, uh, and suggests the council put this uh draft out for community consultation. Uh, many of the matters that we put out for consultation draw interest from the broader community, uh, and this may be another case, but we certainly expect that it will draw interest from the, um, particularly the hospitality sector of businesses of this region. Uh, we have conducted a 12-month mobile food vendor trial, uh, and that was down at Riverside Park. There were four different food vendors provided with a permit to set up in the car parking spaces within the area. Uh, we report details that there was a pizza trailer, a burger van and so forth, including mobile coffee. Uh, following the uh establishment of that trial and what we've learned from that, we've prepared this draft mobile food trading code of practice and it seeks to try and strike a balance between not undermining existing and fixed bricks and mortar businesses whilst expanding the opportunities for our community and our visitors to have a broad food experience, which is becoming more and more important in the tourism sector. So, the report notes that fixed food businesses have a higher cost, including rent and fixed electricity and water. They also have higher fit-out costs for their businesses. Uh, fixed food premises have more flexibility with longer hours pending planning and zoning. Um, they're also generally operated within the high-traffic CBD locations, but mobile food traders don't have access to fixed electricity or water and they've got to provide their own. Uh, they do have to have big road registration and insurance and there's a lot of other pluses and minuses in the ledger. Taking all of that into account and also having consulted with the number of surrounding, excuse me, the number of surrounding and regional municipalities, we've landed on a proposal uh of a fee system with a $1,000 annual permit fee, $600 for a six-month fee and so on. And we're recommending, Mr. Mayor, that the council seek community and business feedback on this draft food traders code of practice.
Question, councillor. Yes, councillor.
Uh, how long will the consultation period be? It doesn't actually say under the consultation section of the report.
Um, I'll imagine it'll be for 28 days, whatever is required.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in relation to consultation, as this is going to have an impact on our fixed businesses and that, are they going to be told individually or can we notify them through Swan Hill or someone links that this consultation is out so they get a, a good chance to respond?
Yeah, we'll definitely put it all in a local media address for Swan Hill and then we also have an extensive contact list through public health team that will send you that as well because we really want to get their feedback as well as all the communities' feedback.
Yeah, so that, that will obviously kind of run by them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. The advantage we have in this case is that all food premises are registered with council and so we've got a great database to, yeah, make direct one-on-one contact.
Yeah, and there's nothing stopping those fixed um food businesses from applying for a temporary main as well.
Yes, there is a point, there are a couple of businesses that have owed, um, but yeah, by and large, most of them are just fixed. Uh, they definitely have the opportunity to set up mobile food vans and apply for these or on rent, uh, in our markets, which some of them already do.
And I see it's in the report as well anyway, but then we just talked about Swan Hill and one of the things that they do, uh, part of the, the food van, they're going to be charged a fee to be a temporary member of Swan Hill as a business.
Yeah, yeah, we can charge that through the road system, that's just not possible with this type of thing because it is a temporary permit. Um, so that's a way we're very limited, actually, to find out whether temporary members are still going to be to try and create that balance of fairness between the fixed brick and mortar businesses that already get charged that fee. Um, we invite mobile food traders to get a couple of advantage by missing out on the paid-up fee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on page 218 of the agenda. Further investigations required on locations for semi-permanent locations, which could be potentially tendered out. Um, that's, I'm assuming that means like container-type setups, it could be in a, in a sort of quasi-temporary setup. Um, is that something then that would be come under a different type of policy or that would then be added in down the track once, once we've got more information on that?
Yeah, that was something that the traders that we surveyed that were currently in part of the car, that's something I'm really interested in was having a set spot on and then having that car parking area, so there are concrete slums, having opportunities set up, um, something like you're saying with the um shipping container style. But what we think next step first is we just set, take this out for community consultation, see if that's something that community would be happy to give up public space for, um, and then look at what costs they are, whether we're going to get new people sign up for this mobile food trade process, um, and whether it'll be, be worthwhile spending on the infrastructure. It's probably not something we're really wanting to get, but at least for a month after, I think, um, mobile food trade always goes ahead, just to see what we can receive and whether it's going to be on loan or just whether it's just a slack in mobile food being, I don't know.
Thank you. No, uh, it was how, thank you.
Do you have a question, Speaker? Can I have a move, please?
Councilor, Councilor suggested an amendment, please, Mr. Mayor.
Can you move the motion? Would you make a move?
I'll do that. Can I move the motion that council seek community and business feedback on the draft mobile food traders code of practice for a period of 28 days? Just so we've got consistency in our support.
Okay. I'll have a second of the...
Yes.
Can I move another amendment? Just, um, the refusal of a permit. Um, I recently heard of an incident where somebody applied to be in this, but they didn't get notified when they applied during that on the day, and all the last two, um, were here. So is there something you can just put in there about the time frame, the refusal of the permit?
Um, I want to page you on the text.
This is, okay. Refusal of the permit.
So, Councilor Young suggesting a change to the code of practice itself, so on page 247 of the agenda. And the 4.4 decision-making or 4.5 refusal of a permit. Council can refuse an application if the proposed vehicle dimensions would unduly restrict additionally any disqualification from a council or outstanding fees, etc.
Is this a time frame? I think they refuse being in a certain class, I think, starting off on the day and then having been out for a, within a certain time.
So you're asking for, um, through the dot point here with the...
Yeah, it's dot point, just says the time, you know.
I can probably answer that with the applications, they either receive approval or, um, a refusal of the date of their trade would be what we would be looking at.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Oh, sorry. We would be looking at when they apply, we would need the consent approval to, um, operate or a refusal well before the day that they're going to operate. They definitely wouldn't find out, you know, after the backdoor on that day, would want to do it well before.
Okay.
So, I guess, Mr. Mayor, the best way of dealing with that is under 4.4 decision-making, a fo, a further dot point, saying, uh, decisions will be made in a timely manner. That would assist to Councilor Young.
Maybe you move it, you took that, um, councillor then?
Would that be part of the motion or is that, should that be part, this should be part of the consultation period? This should be part of the motion, though.
Part of the consultation, well, in view of this, yeah. Or...
Yeah.
It's just a question. Excuse me, correct?
4.4. So we're not, not actually adopting, we're putting it out in time.
Mr. Mayor, more reading the circumstances, Councilor Young's moved an amendment saying, as per the recommendation, the council seeks community and business feedback on the draft mobile food traders code of practice for a period of 28 days, subject to the following change, which is the addition of that dot point.
In that dot point.
That is, that is effectively Councilor Young's motion.
Okay.
It's not being said at the moment.
It's said, it was last, it's, it's only effective if you move the motion and I'm going to take that with councillor or...
Yeah.
You'll have a move with that.
Yeah.
And the second was...
That was a share.
What's the benefit?
No. Thank you.
4.4. Is that top point or...
I think that's adequate to bring back a move, Mr. Nick.
Yeah.
Nah, 4.4, it's just decision-making, regardless of policy or maybe that...
Yeah. Ready with that, Speaker? Please, that's a no, anything. I hope you did your words, the motion, councillor, and I mean, I'm just checking that we have, uh, Mr. Speaker's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a really good step forward, um, considering that the trend of mobile food vans and mobile food traders has been huge over the last five years. Hopefully it increases, um, however, it's known that small business is hard, particularly in the hospitality industry, it's already pretty hard. Um, so developing a po, a policy and procedure that doesn't make it hard on our permanent traders who do contribute to rates and contribute to Swan Hill Inc. and contribute to the wider community by wider sponsorship, volunteering, all the, uh, all the other things that local businesses, local small businesses in particular, uh, do for our community. Um, it helps to protect them as well as encouraging, uh, maybe they are temporary businesses, maybe they are more businesses to come into, into town, offer some, offer some other options for, uh, for resident holidaymakers. Uh, and I think it's a great way to activate our front-end, some green spaces. Uh, but these types of fees, uh, and permit fees will make sure that our hos, our existing hospitality traders, uh, and operators are, are not too disgruntled and, and, and think of mobile food traders as getting a free ride and avoiding all of those fees, rates, etc., etc. So, um, I think this strikes a really good balance. It is a very good policy. I encourage everyone to, to have a read of it. It's not, it, look, it's not sexy reading for the most part, as most, uh, codes of practice and policies and procedures are, but it is well worth it and I do encourage uh everyone to have a read, everyone that's thinking about a mobile food business, everyone owns a food business at the moment, should, uh, give us your feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I broke the policy in terms of it's, it's a balance between our existing, uh, bricks and mortar, um, hospitality that operate within our municipality and it creates a, a bit of increased competition, we also, from experiences at our Riverside Parks and our other locations, but people mainly home to a tent that might not necessarily want to come out and sit down with their tent kids and, and group friend, etc. Um, but going to a park for purposes of eating and having a home is an experience that people have enjoyed and that has been pretty well supported, uh, but it, it doesn't necessarily tackle open, uh, established businesses, but I think it's a balance between the two and looking forward to the feedback around how that can put it over in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jifry. Do the speakers for the motion? Any decent motion? Don't you disclose against it then?
I may say everything with this, you said, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do the councillor then, I'm going to go to the other side. Asking unanimously. Item B21.47, environmental management policy.
Uh, council has, or council officers have reviewed the environmental management policy. Um, it's a policy the council's had in place, uh, for a number of years, uh, it was, uh, discussed at a recent council assembly as well. I think the policy was first adopted, uh, in April 2007 and has seen a number of reviews since then, mainly of 2010, uh, and 2016. This policy has, uh, this review of the policy has, uh, ruled the policy in line with the ISO standards, I think it's, uh, ISO 14001, for those who like that sort of stuff. Uh, and it tries to, uh, make sure that our environmental management processes, uh, if this policy is followed, will make sure that this council operates in the most sustainable manner possible. Uh, I'm sure council has already read the policy, but I would just remark that the scope of the policy is that it applies to all operations and assets of council, that the council has direct responsibility and control over. Uh, the application of the policy will ensure environmental responsible behaviour in staff and contractors and promote actions towards sustainability in the wider community. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm recommending the council adopt the updated environmental management policy as it's presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, questions, councillors?
Uh, I'm sure council has already read the policy, though just to remind you, the scope of the policy is that it applies to all operations and assets of council, that the council has direct responsibility and control over. Uh, the application of the policy will ensure environmental responsible behaviour in staff and contractors and promote actions towards sustainability in the wider community. So, Mr. Mayor, I recommend that the council adopt the updated environmental management policy as it's presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions, councillors? Any more questions, can I move the voice? Yes, we did, we tested the regulation, councilion, you have a second, uh, council, okay, you speak for the motion, councilion.
Um, no, I think it's, um, very, very well presented and it's very topical, um, with what we need to be doing as a society, um, staying within the boundaries of what's practical and sensible. Um, so I, I think it's, um, a good recommendation that we up the.
Council, okay.
Um, yeah, I, I reiterate that and agree, uh, it's very important naturally to the, uh, wellbeing of the natural systems in our environment and to the people who use it and live in them. And even the industries that depend on that, that we are sustainable and also promote a better environment than the one we have now. Uh, it is the goose that lays the golden egg of our lovely way of life and indeed all on which all our industry is generally based, not often recognized enough, thank you.
Thank you, Council Jane, three to the floor, motion. Are you against the motion? Or are you opposed, councilion? Again, if you have a question, you have a pilot, ask unanimously. I have to be twenty one point four eight, really new and hasn't been played.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's a requirement for council under the local government act of twenty twenty to adopt a four year revenue rating plan. Uh, plan is there to identify sources of revenue to be included in annual budgets in relation to our, uh, third revenue sources. Uh, it provides descriptions of taxation principles, preferences to rate having equal division of rating burdens, descriptions of differential rating and property valuations in the administration of production of rates. For raising, uh, our services, uh, this application of partial divisions and price services property value. Uh, it also goes on to explain further how council prepares for other opportunities when they arise. As per the policy, we have sent this out for public verification and consultation, will to receive no submissions. Uh, we are asking that the council adopt this rating and revenue plan as presented.
Any questions, councillors? Any more questions, can I have a move of course? To the council then, who's second, councillor King? Mr. Speaker, the motion.
Really quickly, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm actually really surprised that there were no submissions after committee consultation about, uh, the revenue and rating plan. Um, I, I hope that doesn't mean that, that nobody's read it, uh, that people don't understand how, uh, rates come out and, uh, everything else. There's a lot of work that goes into, uh, documents such as these. Again, as I mentioned, there's, yeah, there are documents that are not exactly sexy reading, but they are vitally important, um, well done on, uh, on this revenue and rating plan. Thank you. No, no, okay.
Do you have a second, you're, against, agreeing now, you have a vote, you have a pilot, ask unanimously. I have to be twenty one point four nine, adoption of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Purpose of this paper is to run through the final, um, status of the budget post all of the requirements for statutory advertising and feedback from the community. I'll hand over to Warren to go through the final details and we'll request that the, uh, council consider the budget for adoption. Thank you, John, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it was quite the council venom, saying about sexy documents, I thought it was very sexy after this one. There's about several sexy pictures of it. Um, so, no, but we're all very pleased with this document, we've been working on it for six months. Um, so this is the culmination of the budget of, of the, the budget for, for two thousand twenty two. So, um, it allows us, uh, to, uh, expend the money as proposed in the budget. Um, and, and it enables us to raise the revenue through rates and, uh, other fees and charges to, to do those progress and budgets and projects as well. Um, you're all aware that the rate, we've achieved this budget, we did the right capital, one point five percent, so one point four seven percent, we achieved that. Um, in terms of the waste management, uh, program, uh, we are expecting project cost increases in cap cycleation and landfill management, along with significant increases in our EPO levy. Um, and through that, uh, we had to increase our garbage charge by two point four percent. So that's an eight dollar increase on a one tonne liter bin recycling service, a twelve dollar increase on a two tonne liter bin recycling service. And our optional green waste, which differs, um, waste from the landfill is ninety five dollars for the full unit rise. So I'm pretty pleased with those, that particular number, and all the numbers of yours. Um, in relation to the capital works program, there's twenty six million dollars of, of projects, uh, planned in this, these twelve months. Uh, nearly eight million dollars in roads, seven point eight million dollars for construction of the airplace, including other, our reserve region projects. Uh, we've got one point eight million dollars to develop housing in Rockenwild, two point four million dollars for lining in the runway bridges at the aerodrome, and one point four million dollars regional soccer house at the Kinnaird. So, uh, this working on this, and there are others numerous, uh, worthy projects, uh, to talk about as well. What I'm particularly pleased about also is that we'll be debt free in ten years. This last year was our last year we borrowed any money to build our capital works program. So our loan liability will reduce to seven point seven million dollars this year, it's two point six million dollars next year. Um, and in terms of, in percentage terms in relation to rates, that's, uh, sorry, sixteen point one percent of rates going towards servicing debt. So that's, that's what they achieved for us as well. Um, as you're aware, the last couple of weeks, we've, we've had meetings, um, to hear submissions to the budget, but we said, could you submit it not from Rockenwild, not from Soddo Residence? Um, and last week we heard officers, uh, responsive to those questions, most of them questions, not so much requests, the change. Um, and we resolved last week that there's no, no measures needed, uh, required by just being amended as it was advertised. Um, so the basis of it was prepared on business as usual basis, um, and that's my optimistic view, given the, we're in a current pandemic. But we, we prepared on that basis because we believe the economic recovery will continue to cover the government and measures that we can introduce, such as stand down, the no adjustment to service delivery, if and when restrictions are imposed upon us. Um, we are starting the year with a service, we budgeted for all service last year, um. The saving growth in the last twelve months has been this week in the Victoria jobs program from the state government. And, and, and measures that obviously taking during, of course, the year, uh, to bring the budget, uh, big budget for service. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I recommend that the eleven recommendations that we've got in, in this report, um, is up to my council, they're basically applying, enabling to apply to the obligations under the Act. Um, it allows us to clear the value of rice that we need to run a business for these twelve months. And it clears a number of various, uh, differential ratios that lay up a better than even distribution of our, my right bird, the rest of the rights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, any questions? Yes, council, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the capital works program, twenty six point four million dollars. And I, we're just saying it's dependent on receiving forty million next door funding. We have received some of that money. Do we normally get all that money?
Uh, yes, we do, yes, this. Um, it's, it's often, it's a timing issue for us, um, the majority of that money will be our reserve region money for the airplace building. Um, we have worked significant money in there from other stimulus packages from the, from the, uh, state government through the drought, two, two drought rounds. Um, and this open raising community destruction program, so there in there as well, but yeah, fourteen million dollars in external funding, that's just, that's twenty six million dollars worth of works.
But that one's saying it's basically guaranteed, you're saying it's depending on that receiving that?
Uh, yes, generally they are guaranteed money.
Thank you. Question, yes, councillor King?
Yeah, just a further question on the capital works program. What's our capacity to deliver the proposed capital works program over the next twelve months?
I think excellent, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have had a, a hard time trying to complete, uh, capital works in the past. We have tried a, a new and renewed focus on, on project management. We've, we've, uh, employed consultants for twelve months, there's eighteen months we've been burdened to, to better equip that area. So project officers in the organization have a better understanding of what's required to, to move a project from start to finish. Um, so we, we've been, that, uh, we'll be able to, to achieve that in the coming twelve months.
Any questions, councillors? This councillor, oh, move the motion, have you had anything to add?
As a word in eleven recommendations.
Do I second your question, councillor Jifry? If you speak for the motion, councillor King.
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to, um, thank the staff for the effort they do put into this, uh, budget. It is, um, a, a great budget and very fair with a rate rise, an average rate rise of one point four seven, which is below the, um, rate cap of one point five. Since I've been on council, even prior to the rate capping, we've always maintained a very low rate rise as best we can. And we try and distribute it across all rate categories as best we can to make it fair and, um, right across the board. Just because there's a, um, rate rise of one point four seven, that's an average. Unfortunately, some will be a little bit higher than that, some will be a little bit lower than that. That's an average rate rise, that's how it has to work out. Um, but if anyone does have a concern about their rates, they've always got the opportunity to object to that rate, and it'll be in the future. But the work that the, um, the finance department does, so, Mr. Schneider and his team, I'd like to congratulate them for working together, and it is a fair and good budget with twenty two to twenty six million dollars, capital works, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, follow up, councillor King, I think it's good to be heading into another financial year in the surface. Uh, I just acknowledge that there's still a lot of risks and unknown in the future around, uh, waste management and how the states and, uh, Australia, the federal level are going to continue to, um, face the issues that are there. So there still are issues around that going into the future. Uh, but particularly a lot of memories, uh, looking forward to the spinal rotation of the psychocup with the one point four million dollars, with some, uh, government funding there as well, which is quite far away, yeah, much later.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jifry, any further speakers for the motion? Are you not, you're against the motion? They know you should close the vote, yes, I know. I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a pilot, ask unanimously. I have to be twenty one point five zero, diversity policy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, councillors, uh, councils had a diversity policy since two thousand and twelve, and it's been updated several times over the years, and it was well overdue for a review. So obviously this policy articulates council's position in relation to diversity in all its forms, uh, and as you see in the policy, acknowledges, the council acknowledges and celebrates the contribution of diversity, brings the social and economic development opportunities within our area. Um, the significant changes you see here is just double checking the, uh, the diversity definition. Obviously, you can see if you look at the first page, the actual policy there, the definition relates to race, ethnicity, culture, gender, sexual orientation, socio- socioeconomic status, age, language, physical and mental abilities, religious beliefs, believer beliefs and other ideologies within this category. Um, yeah, are there any other significant changes to this policy? We need to make sure that it remains in line with the charter of every rights and also the new local government act twenty twenty and the new agenda, equality act twenty twenty, which you're all very familiar with, with the work that's happening coming down, uh, towards the end of this year, it aligns with those, with every legislation. It's presented for adoption, I guess council wishes to make any changes to the policy.
Okay.
Any more, any questions, this one? Yes.
Sir, the policy doesn't mention council as an employer, is that correct?
Uh, through you, Mayor, under the scope, it says the policy applies to all council programs providing services to communities within the municipality. So the assumption there under the scope is that it applies to everything that council has an impact on. That's the interpretation, but happy to.
Thank you. Councillor King, I think for the fourth, you know, for the fourth, my, I have a note, please. Have you asked for them, have you heard, have you asked for Jifry? If you speak for the motion, councillor King?
Uh, really quickly, it's, it's, uh, very much perceived that diversity is really important in all its forms, um, and it's important we keep our finger on the pulse, especially with the new legislation, with the local government act and the gender equality act twenty twenty, um. Good work, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jifry, fire. First, let us clear the motion. Against the motion, you have a vote, you have a vote, I have a vote, I have a vote, I have a vote. Harry, unanimously. I have to be twenty one point five one, deputy mayor's position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this report, uh, sees a review of the council's deputy mayor position policy. Uh, councillors have had the opportunity to read the, uh, policy it provides for, uh, the position of deputy mayor and, uh, acknowledges the council will make the decision each year at the same meeting at which it elects the mayor as to whether it wishes to have a deputy mayor for that year. Uh, the policy and the procedure has been brought in line with council's new governance rules to ensure that they, uh, complement each other. And, Mr. Mayor, I recommend that the council adopt the deputy mayor policy as presented.
Any other questions, councillors?
Oh, maybe that's further recommendation?
Can you see it, please, uh, councillor King? The motion, councillor King, can you see it, please? Councillor King, any further speakers for, against, well, I have a vote, I have a vote. I have a vote, I have a vote. I have a vote, I have a vote. I have a vote, I have a vote, thank you. I have to be twenty one point five two, setting the council allowances.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, one of the, uh, changes within the, uh, twenty twenty local government act is the transfer of responsibilities in determining mayoral, deputy mayoral and councillor allowances to the Victorian Independent Remuneration Tribunal, which is called the Remuneration Tribunal elsewhere in this report. However, that tribunal hasn't yet made its first determination on allowances or on the allowances framework, and therefore the, uh, existing arrangements continue to apply, even though the legislation on, upon which we're relying has been repealed. And I'm acting in response to advice from the office of local government in this matter. So under section seventy four one of the old act, the nineteen eighty nine act, councils must review and determine the level of mayoral allowance and councillor allowance within six months of a general election or by thirty June, whichever is the latter, and in this case thirty June is the latter. So in understanding the reviews coun- sorry, in undertaking reviews, council must ensure that a person has a right to make a submission under section two two three, uh, of the old act. So we did this report, we detail what the current allowances are, and they are, the mayoral allowance is sixty seven thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars and eighty eight cents. This is per annum, and the councillor allowance is twenty five thousand four hundred and sixty six dollars and one cent. And allowances are set by categories, and they are categories of council, which is meant to reflect the size of the council and therefore the likely workload. So the Swan Hill Rural City council is in a category two council, councillors can range from ten thousand nine hundred dollars up to twenty six thousand two hundred, and with the mayoral allowance of up to eighty one thousand dollars. So you can see the council's currently not, uh, maxing out the top of that category. In discussions with, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Mayor, in discussions with council previously on this matter, council have expressed a desire to preserve the allowances at the existing level. And this is really in response to the economic, uh, difficulties being experienced as a result of the response to COVID nineteen. And so I recommend that council preserve the current mayoral and councillor allowances with no increase on the prior, on the previous year. And pay a remote travel allowance to be paid at a rate of forty five dollars per meeting or function to a maximum of five thousand six hundred per annum. Further, I've been recommending the council advertise the pro- proposed allowances and seek submissions in accordance with section two two three of the local government act. And, uh, for clarity, Mr. Mayor, that is a twenty eight day exhibition period. And in the event of no submissions being received, that we adopt, uh, the preservation of the current allowances and increase in travel allowance at the July council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Increase in travel. Move the motion, is there any questions? There's a reason, I should have talked to councillor King, I'm second to the councillor, please. Speak for the motion, councillor King.
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. Mayor, as the CEO, this report came to a previous assembly, all the council president, um, agreed to date, because of the time with COVID nineteen, a lot of, um, financial issues going on, right through our municipality. That, uh, we do not take A R S this time, like it's not very appropriate and shows leadership. And also, like, you don't do this job for the money, as can be shown there, you spend a lot more time than what you're doing for your money. So it's, um, they say you're paying, but actually you're monkeys, well, I like the way you've got monkeys around the table, even though we're a scene for your nuts. But I think it's, um, it's, um, definitely not encompassed as what you do do in your council, you don't take on those roles for the money, that's definitely the case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor King. Can I speak to this call, Councillor? Against the motion? Pardon, the Councillor King, I want to stand again, the Councillor has voted, and unanimously. I'd have been 21.49, standing back up, Councillor King, I think I'm fair.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the March council meeting this year, council approved the attendance of the mayor, yourself, councillor Moore, councillor Mackay, and myself, CEO, to attend the 2021 Australian Local Government Association Conference in Canberra. There are in excess of 100 motions to be dealt with at that meeting of councils, Mr Mayor, and it's necessary for council to identify which councillor will exercise council's right to vote at that meeting. Council must make a decision and select a councillor, not just make a councillor attending the meeting to be specific in the motion. And so, I'm recommending you as mayor, so the council authorize the mayor, councillor Bill Moore, to exercise the voting right to the Swan Hill Rural City Council at the 2021 National General Assembly in Eldon, Canberra.
Oh, maybe I have my name.
You spoke to the councillor briefly.
Well, just spinning off the mayor, banging off the, that's a mayor, attempting to ask the council.
Ah, no, Councillor Young said he would.
I can give you another one. I've got a ticket for the motion, you can speak to the motion. I have a right to vote.
Mr Mayor, the seal was used on two documents, a deed of renewal of lease for the Lake Burger preschool, and also a renewal of lease for the Lake Burger Olingreens over last month. So, I'm just recommending that council know C actions in signing and sealing the documents.
In the much, the Lake Burger preschool, CEO, have you ever given that grant back to the Department of Education, I just don't have the numbers, yes?
Question is, how do we go about it? It would be by negotiation with the Department of Education. I don't believe that we've been into those discussions, though.
Well, just, I mean, with those sort of leases, whereas a permanent school building may now, it's a mixed school, whether it's going to concern the teacher, I just want to ask this question.
Through you, Mayor, that's actually one of the offshoots, that's actually one of the offshoots of the creative estate to renovate the building, I think, because one is education lane, and one is actually crown lane. So, there's quite a lot of secret work, but it's not fair, right? To investigate that, because there's resources that we have.
Any further questions, councillors? Oh, maybe I have better consideration considered. Councillor King. Speak to the motion.
I'd have been 21.49.
I need to have students, you're leading on, so I have a right to vote, unanimously. I'd have been 21.49, the capital statement is in reference to the things that we know.
Noting, Mr Mayor.
I'm sure there's a, I'm sure there's a, 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 there's
a, I make two different approaches associated with NAD on Magna Martin, to different sendings to have, went to the Beavent benefit, there's an initiative where they're tired of rating band group, which is a bit promising, went to the RCV to solve it, and the Art Valley Advisory Committee virtual making, which was whether to do a submission for the health system, and there was one date, and all the others were false, I don't know, and this council made it.
That was robust, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sharokowski was called out, I actually used our new online submission process, so it's certainly cut down on my use of paper, which I'm a big fan of. The 25th, 6th and 27th of March, we went to myself and councillor Young, as well as Director Gray, went to the Rural Council's Victoria Summit in Gambia, which was really valuable. We had a Reba planning session, Reba is the Rockwell Use of Business Association, had a planning session via Zoom. I've been doing a lot of the municipal association Victoria training sessions, which have also been really, really good. We did one on the presentation of public speaking skills, and the MIB mayoral program, which was excellent, there's a couple more of those coming up, and a Reba meeting last week, and we've also had, in addition to that, had a NAD OFF Week meeting for Robbenvale, which is pretty exciting. Sorry? Oh, yeah, that should be made, sure. Not much. Maybe?
Well, thank you, Councillor Benham. Councillor King.
I have nothing to report, mainly part due to leave of, approved leave of absence, in which time, however, my comment that during that time, I was fortunate enough to travel legally to Queensland before they closed the border to Victorians, and the shortage of workers, casual workers within the hospitality and farming sectors is not just here, it is Australia-wide. So, whilst it's not a necessary report, just worth noting that as we talk about such things in the future, and immigration topics and whatnot, this is an Australia-wide problem, the shortage of casual workers.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I had a couple of meetings, community meetings, went to them, but not a lot to highlight, which we will continue to push, was a meeting with Transport for New South Wales regarding the bridge consultation, and as previously, we have finished the tour from our New South Wales, and the bridge is coming along greatly. We have a lot of community agreement on the desired location, where the location can become straight alignment, but just a matter of keeping the pressure on the hill to get the build of the, please, Mr Mayor.
Oh, on the 8th of June, I attended an online Victorian flood erroneously titled, Victorian Fire Restoration Project Stakeholder Group Meeting, and the Central Victorian Rennas Alliance Board Meeting, the rest was a bit impacted by COVID restriction.
Thank you, Councillor Mackay. Similar things to the others, similar things. Coincidentally, after us speaking at Adama at one of the assemblies, I had a call for a concerned grower, again, skills shortages, so we arranged a meeting with Councillor Benham and this group of concerned growers on setting up Adama, just being, the sitting on the worker scheme isn't working for them, tried all sorts of ways, all the same issues, skills shortages, just can't make them can grow, they can't because of lack of laid estate. It was a very interesting conversation, and we talked about some of our bigger growers in the area, and what they would do, and the dashboard, I guess, maybe the one, and that's about it. Looks like it's about it, we have no incoming items?
No.
No incoming items, so that looks like the end of the meeting, the previous meeting closed at 3.29pm. I was conscious, I didn't see that, it's all, it's all.